Okay. We need a motion to reconvene the work session.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Okay. Board members, item five, it's personnel, and I recommend the board approve the personnel actions and submit it.
You've heard the superintendent's recommendation, we have a motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Thank you, board members. Item six is superintendent's report on reopening schools. And I want to just give some preface to this as we walk into it. The plan to reopen schools has been informed by a lot of different sets of guidances. It is really still in draft because we're still working through some specifics. And I suspect once we get the report out next week, there still will be some iterations as things continue to change. But we certainly are informed by guidelines from our Oklahoma State Department's reopening map for schools, from the Department of Public Health in Alabama, Jefferson County, from the American Academy of Pediatrics, from the Centers for Disease and CDC, the American Institute of Architecture, Southern Region for Education, boards, SREV, and multiple independent sources. I've heard, as you have, from many people qualified in the medical field, from organizations weighing in about certain aspects of the plan. So there has been a lot of information for which we can work from. Unfortunately, there are not a lot of directives for local schools or requirements in place for local schools. So we are left with the task as a school system to make a plan with more specific information for our employees, for our students' parents. So with that in mind, I think it's important to know that in any development that we take on in our system, we're going to start with our strategic plan. We're going to bring ourselves back to the mission and what it means to provide opportunities for students to learn without limits. We're going to draw from our beliefs of what we think are important, and we want those to be the basis of what we do. Now, what I've learned in years as an adult and in the profession and in personal life, we can all have the same set of beliefs but not agree on the specifics of how it ought to be done. And that's usually the case with any type of plan. But I think we all come from the same place, that we value what's on the board, and that's important to drive our work. So today, the purpose of the day, just for clarification to those that are attending or watching, it's not a vote on the plan. It's not on a vote on specifics of the plan. It is for us to engage in a conversation about the details of the plan so that we can make whatever modifications or action necessary to it to when we give it to the public. So we informed our parents a couple of weeks ago that the week of July 13th, we would release the plan. And I do believe that will be the latter part of the week, most likely July 16th. Today is an important day for trying to put finishing touches on it as we need to, continuing to listen to stakeholder groups and get their feedback as well. And there are some uncertainties in parts of the plan. We're still having to get information from the State Department. So we need a little bit additional time. And then Mr. McGee needs time to provide for this community a clean document because we will give a single document of our plan that will be robust, I believe, in nature and not answer everybody's questions, not please everybody, but will be a guide for us to move forward.
So you'll go out in video in a document?
Yeah, what you'll find, I wouldn't go into more details about this, but the document will be made up of several different sections. We'll start with the message that I'll give about the plan itself. There'll be a one-page summary of the document that will hyperlink to the sections of the plan. And inside the sections of the plan, there will be some hyperlinks to videos that our staff will be talking about certain components of. So we want to provide as much detail as we can in a narrative form, but also in video for folks that might want to know it a different way. So we want to give the plan out in a way that's meaningful and as thorough as it can be at that, at this time. And we've scheduled this all along. There are some boards that have put out plans earlier, and that's fine. We feel like our timeline works well for us. Because once the plan is released, things begin to start having to happen. Parents are going to have to begin to notify us about what their plans are for their student. And then we have to then plan for class roles and class assignments and what that means for our staff. And all of that has to happen to get us to start school on August 13th. And we will continue with the date for us to start on August 13th, provided that the governor or other health orders do not intervene and contradict that. Okay. Now, the plan itself has a few things that I think are important to note. Philosophically, I want you to know that when we develop this plan thinking about our strategic goals, that there's a shaping of balance that I think is important because there's physical safety and there's social emotional safety for kids that are going to be on campus, and there's a balance that should be achieved, I feel like. There is the idea that there are rights and responsibilities that we have for ourselves and for each other. And that there are comparable learning opportunities that we want to provide, depending on how students are educated, with the practical realities that might, that may not be totally possible. So there's a great balance that we're having to achieve in doing that, what is best for our school. And so what we've done is we've created four sections of the plan. The first one, and I think most important one, is the social emotional frameworks that we'll use to support students, parents, and families, as students and staff. The next one is instructional framework and how technology is embedded, and very important part of that conversation. Then there's the wellness and operations procedures, and then the communication part. So today, what I would like to do is to have a grainy talking through the first two of those. We'll take one at a time, and then I'd like for you to fill questions as you like. So we'll do that for each component. I will tell you that I've just instructed your team that we don't want to go through every detail of it because you have the draft that we're working through. I think it may be more productive that you ask questions about the areas that you are thinking about. So we're taking in that manner to make this useful time. Okay? Dr. Freeman?
First, we'll talk about our framework for social and emotional support. As Dr. Freeman said, it is a framework that schools are used to using in a pyramid when we're talking about supports and how we tier those supports. So when you look at the first page of your document, you'll see that we look at what we're going to provide for students, that the base of the pyramid is what we're providing for all students. And so we know that clear communication of expectations is one thing that will help relieve anxiety, that will allow them to know what's expected of them. So communication is key for all three groups, whether it's students, parents, or employees. So for the base, the base of that pyramid is clear communication of expectation, a safe and welcoming environment, a focus on empathy, knowing that we are going to have children coming from all different types of situations. And so empathetic support. And then also to embrace the new social norms and to help them embrace the new social norms. And then when we think about the next level of support that we'll provide for students that need additional supports will be, we'll have group counseling lessons. So our counselors are working with the State Department of Student Services. They've been doing training this summer in looking to see how we can best support students as we return to school. So we'll have group counseling lessons. And then for students who need even more than that, we'll have individual counseling and then additional supports, whether that be through our community partners. And then also, one of the additional supports that we're going to provide is remote learning. If, if they are, if their anxiety is such that they just can't function on school, on the school campus, we will have that additional support of a remote learning platform so that they can learn from home.
Is this really no different than what we already do? We're just going to have a focus on COVID-related and being in school and...
Yes. As Dr. Freeman mentioned earlier, we know with the reopening of school and just coming from this pandemic where we've all been quarantined, we know that they will come with some anxieties, some, you know, they, we know that children have been in different types of situations. Some children have been in good situations, a healthy environment. Others may have, they may not have been in a real healthy environment. So we know and expect that there will be an additional level of emotional and social support that we need to provide that has not been necessary prior to this time. So this is how, part of what we're doing in the area of social and emotional support for the reopening plan.
Can a parent reach out and request individual counseling to get that? Or that, like, the teacher recognize that and get that for the child?
A parent or, or a child. We're going to use the same process that we've always used. But, but yes, a parent or a child, either one, can request that individual counseling.
At all levels?
At all levels, yes. Do you have any other questions about students before we move to the parents?
Do you think that these kind of more-than-usual types of things, do we have enough resources to cover that? Are we good with our staffing and everything like that? Do you think we'll be fine because it's, it's an extra?
Yes. And I think it's like everything else, we don't know.
We figured out a start?
Yes. Yes, we just, we, we just really will not know until we open and see how many...
We're blessed with the number of partnerships. And as you move up that pyramid, we've got a lot of really strong partnerships from the community agencies, independent physician or medical professionals, psychological professionals. So we're fortunate in that respect, but we've got capacities beyond our counseling team to do that.
Are you ready to move to the other side? Okay. So we also know not only will our students need that additional support, our parents are going to need that support. And so the bottom of the pyramid, again, is clear communication from the district, school, and classroom teachers. So we're really in, are a huge focus on communication. And then that safe and welcoming environment, the focus on empathy and embracing the new social norms. And then the second level of the pyramid is flexibility with attendance because we know that, and we want to make sure we're communicating that to parents, we will have children who get sick and have to miss school. So there will be children who are diagnosed with COVID that have to be out. There will be children who have been exposed to COVID that will have to be out. And so we want to be able to assure, ensure parents that we have an instructional plan that's flexible that will support continued learning.
Did the state help us out with that, like, on their restrictions and guidelines?
Yes, they did. And the, we have a code in our student management system that the state has provided. It's an all-day other absence, and it's for a COVID diagnosis or for exposure to COVID. So yes, they did help us with that.
Excuse me, that will not count against the student?
It's exactly who's driving, is that what I read?
Yes. Yes. It will not count against the student.
And I guess when it allows for a tracking mechanism, that, that's the only thing that goes under that is COVID?
There's a specific code for a diagnosis that will be entered in the student's attendance record. And there's a specific code for exposure that will be entered on the student's attendance record. Yes.
So will, will I, but the use of the specific code of diagnosis, we're looking for a doctor's written diagnosis of COVID.
We won't be requiring that because of the volume of training to do that, but that's going to be up. If you, if you say you got it in our plan details, this is what happens if you say you have it. And it, you know, our plan does get involved in physicians' release to go back. Okay. It's just quite a little portion of it.
They administrate it?
Female phone call. We, we will work out those details. But we do have the opportunity to code them without it being a penalty for parents and without it being a penalty for the school. And so that's why it's a part of our social and emotional supports because so many times, parents are concerned about their child missing school and getting behind and not being able to catch up. And so that's why it's included in the social and emotional.
Ultimately, the work has to be made up. And I know we have all of our structure that you can work on this stuff. How is that kind of a help of it?
Yes.
If, if my 10th grader is diagnosed, and I have a child in 7th grade and a child in 3rd grade, are we relying on the, I'm assuming that the two younger children automatically will have to stay home for X amount of time. Are we relying on the parent or parents to say, "I'm pulling my children out"? Or when one is diagnosed, can our system flag siblings?
We, we are going to get to that when we get to facilities and operations.
We apologize. We apologize in advance for all the questions.
He says we could ask questions.
And I apologize already.
And I want your question answered, and I know that it will be because some of the things and the details will be in the plan that Dr. Freeman and Dr. Mark are going to talk about here.
See, we're jumping the gun, whichever we want.
But in, and this, again, is the framework for social and emotional support. So I want you to think about that. And the reason it's in social and emotional is because we want parents to know and not be worried or anxious about their child missing school. That's why it's included in this section. We also have the Safe Schools app, which you can report, parents can report if they have concerns, and students can report using this app. And then just to know that we have the continuous learning options. So we're going to work with you, we're going to be flexible if you have to miss school. And then we also have these flexible learning options so that you can continue to learn.
And that's the bottom-line message we need to get to students and to parents is, you're not getting your hands slapped because you're sick or you feel bad. It's, we're here and we've got everything in place to keep you going.
Yes. Yes. So that's a part of our framework. And then finally, for stu, for parents who are scared to send their children to school, or not only for parents who are scared to send their children to school, for families who have situations in their home that it would be dangerous to send their child to school, we have this remote learning option. So they can continue to be a part of the Savia Hill City Schools with our remote option. So those are the tiers to the pyramid for the supports, for the social emotional supports that we're providing to parents. And then the next pyramid is for employees. Again, the bottom is similar. It's just that clear communication of expectations, the safe and welcoming environment, the focus on empathy, and embracing the new social norms. The next layer that we want to provide our employees is our employee assistance program, or what we refer to as our EAP program. And with that, they can receive counseling services. It's just an additional partner that we have that will provide that additional layer to employees if they need it.
Because like third-party counseling?
Yes. And it's without charge. It's provided for employees.
And, and then also individual conferences with our director personnel. So for employees that may have questions, that may feel that there may be a need for them to take lead, they can have these individual conferences with our director personnel to be able to talk through what their options are. So that's that next layer of support. And then finally, for, for our employees who, for whatever reason, are not able to, due to COVID, come to work, we have the Families First Coronavirus Response Act so that they can use this, this federal act.
Is that the so many months at 2/3 pay and...
That's right.
The, the legislation?
The first couple of weeks is a full, and then there's a two.
Yeah, at least with terminology.
That's right.
So that's our framework for social and emotional supports. Do you have any other questions?
On the employees, the, the counseling, if you will, I mean, it could be, "I'm uncomfortable standing in front of a bunch of students in my class, I'm feeling pressure", or "my spouse has lost their job due to COVID, my mother has been diagnosed", it's for anything and everything.
Absolutely, yes.
Okay.
We had it already, right?
We had it already. We just want to make sure that they know that that's an option, that it's a service that we provide and it's, that's free for them to use.
And they just line that up through Meredith?
They do it through the EAP provider.
Okay. So it's essentially anonymous?
We're not involved in that case. There, there are times where we might be involved if we recommend it because of some situation.
Right.
But largely it's anonymous.
It's a benefit that anonymous, but a yes. How about our substitute situation?
That's not a social emotional framework. It will be discussed when we get to further investigation. So are you ready to talk instruction?
Sorry.
No, you're good. You have this document in your folder. And this, there, we have four, four learning models. Two of them, parents will have the choice between the traditional learning model or the remote learning. And so as you will see, there's some symbols across the top. So our traditional, the Savia model, that is going to be on campus. Our Savia Hills teachers will be preparing and providing the content as always. We're going to have our one-to-one initiative that we'll be using this year. So every student, K-12, will have their own individual device.
And that's whether you choose remote or traditional.
Yes.
We provide that device.
We will provide that device for every child enrolled in our district, K-12. Then we're also, will be using in the traditional model, Google Classroom, CSOL, and Week at a Glance. And we will also provide flexible and supportive short-term absences. We're going to do that through the blended learning model. So the blended learning model is not a model that you would choose, but it's a model that we will employ should the need arise. So if there are absences, if, if a child chooses, if a parent chooses the traditional model and so the child comes to school and has to be out, we're going to provide some structures with Google Classroom and CSOL and our Week at a Glance so that that child can continue to have access to instruction so that they don't get behind. Or let's, let's say that a student has to be out for 14 days for exposure. And then during that 14 days, before they get to the end of the 14 days, now they are diagnosed. And so they're out another 14 days. So we know that it is not, it's not going to be good for a child to go a month without instruction, without access to being able to continue to learn and to have to wait a month to take assessments when they come back. So we are working to provide structures for short-term absences. And that's why the symbol of the gears, the gears are for Google Classroom, CSOL, and Week at a Glance. And so we will use those structures in the traditional model. And as I shared with our administrators, when architects build buildings in earthquake-prone locations, they build them differently than they do in areas where there are no earthquakes. And so they take into account that this structure is going to have to withstand movement. And so what we've done with Google Classroom and Week at a Glance and, and CSOL is to provide these structures that we're going to use in the traditional model every single week so that we can withstand movement because we know that children will have to move in and out the traditional model. And then...
But in this blended learning, right, we're back, it's not like the last nine-week school, you are graded and assessed.
Yes.
If you're out, it's, from a policy perspective, I assume it's no different than if you were out last year with the week of the flu, you were required to make up work.
Yes.
In some timely fashion, hopefully while you're out.
Yes.
And then assess when you come back.
Yes. With the exception of, if we know you may have to be out for a month. This, with COVID, it's a little different because now we are looking at possibly, you know, 14 days to a month that you may have to miss school. So what we're going to do is use these structures so that you can continue, if you're able. I mean, if you're sick and you can't do the work, then we're going to give you that opportunity. That's that empathetic approach that we're using for our social and emotional framework. If, if you were sick and you can't do it, then the expectation is that when you're better and you can do it, then you would complete it. However, if, if I'm a child and I'm home because of exposure, then my parents probably will want me to continue to be able to learn and keep up with my class and take my assessments because if they have to be out a month, then return at the end of the month and then take an assessment, they're probably not going to remember.
So we're going to try to assess, so essentially to, you assess the kids in the class, and then you may assess how many blended learning.
Yes. So, so the blended learning model is going to be for those students in the traditional model that have to have short-term absences. That will just be, that will help and support them to continue learning when they have to be out.
And this is COVID, we're talking COVID basically, but is this also knee surgery, the flu, mild?
Short-term absence.
Okay. So E falls under anything?
Short-term absence.
I want to interject if I can, the word blended is used in a lot of different ways. And this conversation has been the last three months means a lot of different things. So we'll make sure we're committed to knowing what that word means when you're asking about it. It does not mean I spend part of the day at school and part of the day at home. There's components of our plan that deal with some of that, but that's not blended.
Well, it's not the blend between remote and traditional. It's traditional and absence.
Yeah.
So, so the, with the asynchronous, so if, say they're out a month, then it's totally asynchronous. They don't, there's not an opportunity to like do asynchronous at all.
Not in, not in this.
I mean, it's, you know, pros and cons with, with asynchronous. Because like you're saying, you can't have a student that can do it six hours a day. But then if you do have somebody who's sick, you know, it's really beneficial just to be able to hop on when you feel like it.
And that is asynchronous.
A lot of the time or...
Yes, and that's asynchronous. So they, they will have opportunity when they feel like it, go on and do it. But we're not doing any synchronous because that would involve the teacher having to be present with the child that's out. And so if a teacher is teaching a traditional all day, there would not be that opportunity to have a synchronous time that they can meet with everyone who maybe hasn't at that time. Yes.
Is there going to be, or I guess this probably has been thought about, a synchronous method for this blended learning model of having like a Zoom or Google Meet for that class to be taught. So if you're out for exposure, presumably you're asymptomatic, you've got six hours a day, but you can log in and see the teacher giving that lesson.
Like no extra work, just kind of video there?
Yeah. You're actually participating in the classroom remotely and, you know, I just, like, like moving to video depositions, where you're asking questions from 200 miles away. There's a way to, to documents in real time so that they can also be given the work.
I know today, one of the emails I received from a teacher, they stated that they would have their classroom time, but they were also videoing their class, their presentation and putting it on their Google Classroom so that kids could just click on any time. And Dr. Freeman and I had this discussion with one of my daughters, a couple of my daughter's classes in college in the fall. They're already saying the same thing.
So I think the recording piece works well. I don't know if I was going to speak to this, but we want to be real careful with, for, for all things related to any kind of live interaction with kids on the other end. So there's some care we have to get into when you get into the video piece. But I certainly agree, the video can be a part of the asynchronous experience, but not in a live setting.
Due to COVID issues?
Yeah, I think it's, we have to be real careful on that one. You've got students on the other end, you've got people missing in, who's watching what.
But you can record it and post it, which would be helpful.
A teacher can do video.
A teacher can do video, but we have not asked every teacher to video their every lesson because when you, when, even as you think about elementary teachers, let's use the perspective and look through the lens of an elementary teacher, say. They are teaching English and math, history, they're, they're teaching multiple things all day. And so it would not be as simple as, say, one period of English 9 that you can, that you're teaching, you're teaching ninth-grade English all day long for multiple periods. Well, you can set up a camera and video, maybe one of those lessons to be able to post. But if you're an elementary teacher, you, the camera would have to go all day, really, in order to capture your, your day. And so then you've got a recording of six hours that you're trying to post on Google Classroom, and that would be every single day. So we're, we're trying to balance the needs of the students who are out, but we're also trying to think about what we're asking of our teachers to do as well. So many of our teachers do utilize video clips, even in the traditional setting when they are trying to explain a concept. And so those video clips absolutely will be on Google Classroom. But when we think about asking teachers to teach physically all day and then also record themselves and post that as well, we have not asked them to do that as a plan. But, but we are asking them to utilize Google Classroom every single day for traditional students so that students that are not there can continue to access the material. We're asking them to use the Week at a Glance and have that posted at the beginning of the week so that if a student has to be out, or not only, if a student has to be... so that if a student has to be out, or not only, if a student has to be out, even the traditional students.
Let's plan your week.
It lets you plan your week, yes. So you can look and see what we're going to teach and the concepts that we're planning to cover for the week. You can know that upfront. And then also with the students that have to be absent for 14 days or a month, we have suggestions and our teachers will be able to, when we come back together and have our days at the beginning of the year, when we are looking at the framework that the district is providing, the teachers can talk about ways that they may assess while they're out. And so suggestions would be through the Google Meet. So if it's an elementary student and they need to read something to the teacher in order to be able to assess the skills, assess their level of mastery, then the teacher could schedule a Google Meet with that child to be able to assess their learning. Another thing that high school teachers could do would be to put the assessment in a Google form. So there are multiple ways that we can assess students whenever they have to have a short-term absence that we can make sure they're continuing to learn and continuing to be able to be assessed.
I mean, it doesn't go unnoticed that this is more one for a teacher just to manage the absences with the blended. I mean, that, we may, that may not have come across in our questions, but that would not.
But the blended learning is specific to the actual child that's out, right? So like if my daughter was out sick and she needed to use this model, all the work she's getting, like it's specific to her and her classes, like she goes under her Google.
Yes.
Or.
Classroom, Google Classroom.
And then she finds all of her homework there for those classes that she's missing. So it's specific to her on what she's missing.
Yes, and she can continue to submit that work while she's out. That work will continue to be graded. If there's an assessment that she misses and she's able to take the assessment, we're talking about ways to be able to do that assessment online so that she is on track with her class when she is able to return.
What about the state testing, like some of these baseline? So what if you're out for a month and it's our week to test? How do we?
We haven't.
Do it online and watch it come back?
We haven't received instructions from the state on that yet. We do know what the baseline assessments will be, but I don't know yet what will be expected to do if students are out there in the.
Because they're not super released and coming from your house, I wouldn't imagine.
Right now, I'm thinking, and Dr. Freeman, if you have, if you think something different. The students who are present on our campus will be the ones who take the assessments. We may find something out, you know, additional activity closer to opening.
The validity of it.
I mean, I imagine the state's not on top of us, no.
Yeah, she's pushing.
Speaking about the state, the state is the next column, and that's the remote learning model. And if you look at the symbol at the top, that is the State Department symbol because our remote learning model will be the model, will be the, what is provided to us from the State Department. So our teachers will facilitate the content, but the content is going to be provided from schools' P.L.P. and access, and it will be the learning management system that will be offered through IS Schoology. And again, that has been provided to us from the State Department. And it will be, once a student enters the remote learning model, they will be in that model through the end of the semester.
And so I notice that may not be answered. The state teaches it, it is their curriculums and their course offerings.
Our teachers will facilitate it, but the state has contracted with schools' P.L.P., which is a content provider.
So they provide the curriculum.
Yes.
And our teachers teach it remotely?
They will provide, yes, they will provide the content. It is, the curriculum is aligned to our state standards, they are N.C.A. approved. You will, if you complete that, you'll get a Vestavia diploma. But it is not, it's not like our teachers are designing lessons, pulling resources, and placing it online. We are using the packaged material that will come from schools' P.L.P. and they will access that through the Schoology, which is the learning management system. But that content is being pushed through.
Is your remote class Vestavia students only, or do they just start grouping people together? So it's just.
Yeah, our students facilitated by our teachers. Facilitation, we're not sure exactly what that means at this point because the state has got to train our team who will then train remote teachers when, you know, those selections are made. So we don't know exactly the level of facilitation, but we know the content providing is given to us through school building, correct?
So we'll use.
But most training is Friday morning.
Okay, do we have teachers that that will be their sole job is to teach, or they'll teach a class period?
Well, this is in stages, so very similar to the scheduling process. So we will send out the information to parents. And once they just collect, whether they're going to do the traditional model or the remote learning model, then we will look to see how many students, what grade levels will be taking the remote learning model. Then that will inform us as to how many teachers are needed. So that's really difficult to answer that question right now because we don't know how many of our students will select the remote learning model. And that will determine how many teachers we use.
Which you're looking at pulling those teachers out of our teacher pool?
Or partially.
It's possible, okay. So just some data for your, just information. When we ran the survey in the month of June, 2006 and 48 responded. And that's about a third of the system. And if you look at a school-by-school breakdown, it's about a third of each school. And the numbers came out to be, if asked, if they preferred remote only, it was 13.6. So here's the complexity with 13.6. If I take a class of 16 students in kindergarten and 10% of those is 1.6, so let's say two students are out of Ms. Baker's class and two out of Spender's. You can't necessarily collapse classes, but maybe you can. It may be that in elementary schools, if you're able to collapse, you have teachers that can do full remote. In secondary, or it could be that we designate a teacher to do a number of grade levels, K-2 or K-5. In secondary, it could be that teachers might have a part of their day where they don't teach a traditional class, but they do a remote. And it could be that we got to dig deeper and get additional support for teachers that we would hire on a contractual basis to do some parts of the remote. And so we have the contingency framework of what we're going to do, but we've got to know the kids. So once the plan is delivered next week, next week, then I will tell parents about the 24th of this month, we've got to know if we're going to remote. Because we need a couple of weeks to get classroom set, determine this configuration of teachers. So it happens really quick.
And remote is, remote qualification is going into the semester. So come October 12th, can somebody go, I want to go remote?
You can go in.
You can.
But what we're saying is.
Once you're in, you're in.
Come on, you can come out and say, Chris, yes. We can't play in your class.
We need to know to start to school right, what's going to happen. But there are circumstances that will go into the year that maybe parents have become uncomfortable or really long-term, that they need to go to the fork, away from the blended to a full remote. But we're saying that needs to be done by the semester year end. So, and that to me is very important for stability of a teacher in the classroom. You can't have constant movement, plus that's not a necessary requirement, so.
So they could be remote first half of the year and then come back after New Year's and be, which will bring you some traditional, our last person.
Yes, yes. So once you commit, you're there till the end of that semester.
Do we have the course offerings that they're teaching? I was just curious, do they line up with what we teach at the high school level?
We are working on that now. Course offerings, we received those a few days ago.
I wouldn't expect them to be as robust as what we offer.
We received course offerings a few days ago from the state. And we met with, yesterday we had Rebel League where we had the principals. We looked at the courses that were being offered, we selected those that we will upload into Schoology. And we are working on, because of course, everything that we offer in a traditional model is not offered in a remote model. So we are looking to see the possibilities of how we could make, create those courses or how we could offer those courses if a student chooses remote and it's not one of the ones.
So that is an option, we're not tied to every, I mean, we teach by the state standards, but we can go above and beyond.
Well, we always teach to the standards, but in our school, we have courses that may or may not be offered in the schools' P.L.P.
So some of our high school science, some of those extras we've created.
Cybersecurity, I imagine, some of that they don't. Or VAN. You know, so something like VAN is not offered in schools' P.L.P. So we are working to create plans for that.
We wish it were simple.
So there's a potential to have a Vestavia curriculum class put in there. You could, we could, we are trying to figure out how to offer VAN.
Again, we've received training on schools' P.L.P. on Friday. Once we receive, the district receives our training, that will help inform us more as to what we can do, if we can create courses and place in Schoology, or if that's not an option and we have to do something else. I wish I could give you the answers today, but honestly, we don't know yet until we have the training.
Are the remote teachers teaching remotely outside in their school buildings, or are they at home teaching?
Very likely it's on the campus. And that could be dependent on individual circumstances of those teachings. But, you know, some of our schools are wrestling with spaces for isolation areas and additional, you know, reserve spaces if you have to move classes. And so central's available to us, that would be a likely option for the on-school properties delivering remote instruction. Also a safe way if we needed to isolate bullets to protect them. But I would want them to be with us.
Just a couple of questions. And you can tell me you're getting to this, I'm sorry. So in an example where like a family has, a child, maybe they've got a couple exposures, they start out blended and then decide they want to go remote. So then the child is going to be shifted to a different LMS. And that LMS is going to bring, the Schoology is going to bring standardized curriculum modules, basically.
Yes.
Okay. So which may be a little bit different than what the face-to-face teacher is teaching in the classroom from day to day, although it needs the same standards.
Yes.
Okay. The blended learning and the remote learning, I'm assuming we're using universal design with both of these?
Whenever we talk about blended learning and our remote learning, those are going to be different because our blended learning will be what our Vestavia teachers have created, placed on their Google Classroom and are teaching in the traditional model. And it's again designed for those short-term absences. If it's not going to be a short-term absence and you just don't want to come back to school or if there's a situation where you can't come back to school and you choose remote, the remote will be different from our traditional learning model.
And I'm assuming the remote, since that is coming from the state, they're going to be using universal design, right, in all of those modules?
That is our expectation. We're going to, right now, we really don't know, we will be trained.
That would be a fair.
That's my assumption, but I need to be clear, that is an assumption.
But maybe they need to tweak if possible.
How about the non-educative remote, is universal design?
Just, so it's, I don't know, I can't really measure his favor. It's kind of just the thought that every child has access to the learning. So when you post a video, you also post those captions. When you have documents, I mean, documents in a format where an e-reader can come in.
Oh, really?
So it's just, it's just.
I was thinking it's hard.
You know, and it kind of takes into account just the different ways, not even from a ability standpoint, but also different ways to schedule our absences.
Again, it would be my assumption because they're providing this statewide and this remote learning plan. In our traditional model, there may or may not be as much of that as I would expect in the remote learning plan. And then finally, we have our emergency triage model.
Nice name, really nice.
Just a good title.
See, that'd be easy to remember.
Clear communication. It is a triage model. So the emergency triage model is for that, if we have to, again, have an emergency closure and we have to shut everything down, similar to what we did in the spring, it will be, the Week of the Glance will be more robust, they'll add videos that, you know, will have the synchronous and asynchronous. That's going to be like it was in the spring, but we have longer to plan and prepare for it. So I know that we, I really appreciated our community's support, our parents and our students, who really received great feedback on our survey. And so we hope that we don't have to go back into that plan, but if we do, it will be an emergency triage model where we will deliver instruction to all students at home. And then also we have as part of that, alternating A.B. schedules, maybe considering public health conditions warrant lowering capacity. So that is also part of that emergency plan that if we need to.
If you move to emergency and you're in remote, you just stay in remote, right? This is basically, you only get to emergency from traditional and blended.
You'll be there till the end of the semester. Now, if we're in this emergency triage model, you're in the changing of semesters and you come out and you want to be in a remote and you want to do traditional, then you will be in the emergency triage.
I think we're all a little way off.
Yeah, I want to be clear with you about A.B. schedules, which will be some students one day, other students another day. I'm not a favor of that, I'm not supportive of it because there is no A.B. schedule that answers the question of child care. And that is a very difficult proposition for many parents and for our staff. And while that has been broadcast in a lot of plans across the nation, and some may go that route, I think that we place our parents and our staff at a major disadvantage when we do that. And if we've gotten that far into a problem, we need to close the door.
On the, hopefully we don't get to this, but on the emergency triage model, just, you may or may not answer this, but just say at some point in the future, the over-the-mountain area is a hotspot. We're spiking the schools around here. Do we have the ability to say, we are going to the emergency triage and schools are closed on campus, or is that a state-directed though?
The state superintendent said that will all be local decisions.
But it's clear, Kent Jefferson County Health Department do it?
I would say they could intervene at any time and do it, but from a state level, they won't do school closures. And I will go so far as to saying that school system closures could even become school closures. Depending on what situations would be, but I think that might be not likely, but it could be. But it will be solely left up. Unless there's an intervention with an order, I don't really dissuade that.
Before I finish with the instructional models, I wanted to see if you had any questions about the baseline assessments. And I think it's important for me to tell you the purpose of those baseline assessments. So this, the state is asking that we assess in the first couple of weeks of school. And these are the assessments that we will be using K-12 to do that baseline assessment. And the purpose is to determine gaps, learning gaps that could have been created from having to, you know, end with our face-to-face instruction in March. And so what it will allow us to do is by getting these baseline assessments, we can determine the gaps so that we can go ahead and quickly put in intervention with our S.S.T. teams to make sure that we are getting our students back on track where they should be.
Do the remote learners take those?
Right now, it's just going to be those students in our traditional model.
I think we should get some more clarification on that, on the state background. Because if you're talking about 10 to 13% of kids, in our case, that's 700, 800 kids. Okay. Any other questions, thoughts?
Thank you.
I'll be right back.
Yeah, let Mark take them.
Oh, good, oh, good.
Okay. What I want to do is just, for purposes of. What I want to do is just, just for purposes of going over this outline with you and then then I want to work through questions with you. And I think that's the best way to take this portion, which is the medias portion of the document, which is procedure blade, wellness and operations. And so what you have is a category that's entitled routine procedures and precautions and those entitled enhanced procedures and precautions. This was set up intentionally based on what public health levels look like at a given time. And so it's a scaffold approach. So what you see on routine is where we would operate if we weren't dealing with the severity of coronavirus or the 19 at this point. Enhanced is routine plus these things. So scaffold and they're built upon each other. So you can surmise that while this is not directly tied to the Department of Public Health's data indicator, where there's green is low risk, yellow is some risk, orange is a higher risk and then red is high risk, it follows somewhat in line with that. And given that today, the Jefferson County has the highest rates of confirmed cases in the state now, we are in the red category for Department of Health. So what I'm saying is that you can assume we would be starting with enhanced procedures and precautions when the year starts. I can't imagine that would be different, you know, a month or so out. So that's the setup of this. And so what these procedures and precautions deal with are our four habits for health, which is has to, it's clear it's got out for you, but that's our campaign that we'll be using, so we'll be using to talk about taking care of ourselves, uh, the rights and responsibilities part. Positive and potential exposures protocol is in the document. Student absences and employee leave is covered in the document. Arrival and dismissal procedures are covered. Classrooms exchanges and classroom pedagogy is covered. How we will manage field trips, assemblies and meetings. Uh, the preparation being done for facilities and the cleaning and disinfecting protocols that are in place. Breakfast and lunch service, riding the bus, the substitute pool, uh, and a few other things that's first in there. Those are the topics. And what I mentioned to you earlier, when someone gets into this document, those topics will have hyperlinks, mostly of wit, but they'll be those of us talking about particular points of this. Like we'll do a couple of minutes on four habits for health, if you want to dig a little deeper. Each of these points have some embedded links for those who want to research further into something like what's our, uh, what's our cleaning, uh, chemical made of or what are the symptoms of coronavirus? What are the cases? We've hyperlinked areas where people might want to look deeper into, uh, matters such as what we're talking about. So with that being said, I think we just worked through this document through a Q and A without spelling out the specific details of it and, uh, I'll list it as best I can as you go. So I'd say, ready, set, go.
All right, I'll start. First of all, I will say, just as a comment to everybody who put this together, I was surprised at the level of detail, the hyperlink. It took me an hour to sit up with this. So I commend everybody for this. Secondly, to those watching, there is no way any plan is going to please everyone and we know that. There will be lots of people who are unhappy with whatever the decision is made. So I mean, I think ultimately as the board member, my hope is we keep as many people in school as possible.
Yes.
Um, because I, I believe that is the best education we give socially, emotionally, authentically. So because it's on the first topic and we might as well get it done, we might as well start with the mask issue. Because you all got the same I have. We've gotten a lot of response on both sides of yes requiring, requiring made for masks, no, not requiring them in every version of the 20. Um, so I don't really know where to start, but I'll give you my two cents. I think there's children and then there's faculty and I look at them and address them differently in one of the back end. And I've seen a ton of information. Most people tell us side with science. I'm a science-driven person, um, but I don't necessarily believe that science is all lined up and one state tells us to do one thing. So I sit back and I look and I go, they say N95 is the only way to go, or it's airborne or it's not. So I don't know that we have a tremendous amount of science. You can make it say almost what you want. So I look through, I see both sides of it. My general thought is if I put a mask on a teacher or a child, I am less effectively teaching. They can't see me, they can't hear me clearly, they can't see my social cues, they can't see discipline. I mean, I'm a mother, right? My kids know by my full face what I mean, when I mean it and what timeframe I'm in. So I really think we're going to struggle. I think we're going to have to debate this as to what the balance goes back to, what is education, what is safety and how do we find the right balance? And I'm not saying I know what the exact features are, I'm saying it's a debate, I guess, for us to provide input. Um, and since it was on the first block, I thought we'd start there because why would you skip over it when it's been, what, 95% of our day to day, probably? Um, but I mean, that's where I sit. I, I mean, I'm sort of free choice. I think we get to choose. I really don't want to devalue the education that we give. Not that I think that we cannot effectively teach these children any way we're asked to, but I do tend to believe that there's probably a happy compromise in the middle somewhere. Um, but I mean, and I don't know the best of my product or anything. But I'll start there.
Oh, there was a little bit.
First thing in line.
You know, as everybody else, we, I've received emails for, against. I've received emails from teachers for, against. I've received parents for, against. Medical professionals for, against. So I, I think as everybody's aware, we're chasing a bouncing ball right now. And even if we come to a decision at some point in the near future to, to start school, that target's going to move depending on what the latest and greatest is. Because as Jennifer stated, what we know or think we know today is fact, tomorrow won't be fact, it'll be something else. Um, I do, I do have the protection of the teachers and the staff at heart. Uh, I do hear the emails and, and the phone calls from them.
And I, I think they're the greatest at this, if I'm going to be honest, I really do.
You know, I do too, because they have more people talking back to them. So, um, and is that distance truly what the safe distance is? So, um, you know, I've, I've actually gone online and looked because like you, if, if you're doing this, number one, you can't understand what a teacher's saying, you can't understand what the student's saying. Uh, but I've been online and looked to see if there's a clear mask, a mask that actually you can see people speaking, that if, if that actually helps. Um, so I don't know. It's, it's, uh, you know, my mind is in order, not made up one way or the other right now. And so, um, you know, I'm looking for guidance from the professionals and the, and the educators, people who have stood in the rooms or standing in the rooms and, and see what y'all want to say.
Um, I think, I, I would agree with Jennifer that, I mean, by far our role is to keep kids in schools. We know, I mean, that's just where they need to be socially, emotionally, intellectually, that's where they need to be. So when you look at the guidance, it's really, how does that happen? So we can do distancing, but with the thousands of kids we have, that may not be realistic. We can go to cohort modeling where we, where students are in one group and they move, 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 or they stay and the teachers move. But again, we're, I mean, we're talking about thousands of kids, thousands of, of just people in the system that we need to be concerned about. Uh, I'm going to say, I, um, you know, the email that's been blowing up today and really over the past week, and thank you for everybody that has taken the time to email because, I mean, we have, we've heard from, you know, emergency physicians, pediatricians, people sending guidance. Um, and when you culminate that all together, which, um, which what I think is really the overwhelming response from the teachers, um, and I think their push today was really beneficial for me to hear that voice. Um, we need everybody safe. And I think the evidence is very strong that masking is the way to go. And early in this decision, we were getting some emails about parent concerns about masking. Um, you know, just if my child can't wear them. So, so I've gone to, um, some developmental pediatricians and they said, hey, there's, there's options, right? If your child cannot wear a face mask, they can wear a shield. Um, but the bottom line is, you know, we know that there may be a small percentage of children that can't wear masks, but if we have the other 98% of children and faculty and staff masks, we're going to be able to keep this out of our schools. And we want to keep this out so we can keep the students in. And, you know, um, I hate that this, sometimes it can be a divisive issue because it really doesn't need to be. I think this is a great opportunity for our system to, to lead and to say, you know, this is what the evidence is. You know, we believe that the top priority is keeping the kids safe. And Jennifer, you mentioned free choice, and I think that's almost a yes, but because, I mean, technically we have a choice whether or not to wear a seatbelt, right? I mean, that's, we're supposed to wear seatbelts. We know that that's what the guidance is to keep everybody safe. You still, you know, it's still your choice whether or not to put the seatbelt on, but are you putting other people at risk? And I think that's where it kind of crosses. So my, like my mask, you know, that I came in with today, um, you know, doesn't protect me, it protects everybody else. So, you know, I think it's really important that we take a step back and think, you know, what, what do we want to be known for? And how do, you know, do we want to be known for being a system that says, you know what? We believe the evidence is there and I'm willing to protect you and you and you and my decision to wear a mask. So again, this has been, I mean, it's been a ton of reading and just getting input and, and getting that guidance from, from people that I really respect, who know so much more about this than I do. Um, and I, I believe that the evidence is really consistent and that's the way we need to base our decision.
Well, I agree. We want our kids at school, number one. I think a lot of this goes back to the expectations have to be set at home, what the parents want for their children and when they send them back. You know, talking to their kids and what if we're going to require a mask or if we recommend it, how their child's going to act and support it in our schools. That's going to be huge, having the support from families. Um, but most importantly, we started with this and with our students and we want to have a nurturing environment. So I think we have to think of ways, if we're going to have these kids back, how are we going to build community again? Because like I think, Dr. Raimi, you mentioned, we don't know where they're coming from and where they've been and how can we get them back in the classroom where they feel loved and they feel comfortable? And some kids might come in and they're fearful of the mask and all their friends' masks or their teachers. And I think we have to make sure we're doing everything we can to make them feel loved in the environment they're in. Um, it's tough. I think a little bit, you want them in the classroom where they have a little relief at their desk some. I mean, eight hours a day at a desk with a mask on, I think it's a long time to ask for a child to do that personally. But I think there's a lot of, um, hotspots throughout your schools where they really need them. I mean, kind of, I read where one system said, if you move, you mask. And I think that's something that would be important to teach because a lot of times even in a classroom, when I was teaching kindergarten, we did a lot of centers, you know, if those kids went into a center, I understand they would need a mask on, they're in place contact. And I think if a, a child is at a desk and they're by themselves just staring at a friend's head in front of them, maybe they get a little relief, but when they go line up to go in the hallway, they put their mask on or they're in the lunchroom going through the line, they're masked. Or, you know, in, in a locker room, there's so many opportunities where they're in a high-traffic area where I see we have a lot more concern. But I just feel like we need to think about opportunities in the day where they might have a little bit of normalcy, where they're like, wow, I can breathe, I can feel like this is back to normal again.
Jennifer's already put a mask on a kid for eight hours at home today and see, see how these parents.
I don't think any of them have done that. I haven't put a mask by home.
No, they put the mask on for 20 minutes and go help this idiot. They were a teacher, right? I mean, to stand up and try to speak and work. I mean, very few people were out truly even working with masks on. It is a ginormous feat to have to do that for young children, old children.
But I think we're kind of underestimating the kids and the families.
I don't think that they can't not do it, but I also think that it is not something that, starting April 13th, you go eight hours a day, here you go.
Well, and I think there is some recommendations for mask breaks during the day. And I mean, obviously lunch would be a mask break time and there could be some times to, to work those things into.
But Jennifer has a fair point. If you're in a class of the sizes that we have, you have enough space to be free of the mask. I mean, I'm assuming this, that we're not sitting in pods and in tables, we're sitting in desks in rows.
I mean, I think as long as the distancing supports that.
Yeah, with, in, in tables, tables are in classrooms. We've got those. And so, but, and the students are not, there's not much of a closer distance to the ask for the realities. We can't provide that tight distance in classrooms.
Yeah, kids expect it.
So.
Can I ask a couple of questions? First of all, I think we're all in agreement with the goal is to get as many students physical present as possible. Uh, and I agree with Jennifer that the data that I've seen, the reports I've read are all in good place. Um, the, there is certainly, um, yeah, I agree with Lisa, I appreciate all the emails. It's very helpful to hear what people are thinking, what our teachers are thinking. And I guess that goes to my question that Dr. Raimi, Dr. Wood. Lisa, this draft has a recommendation of face masks. And I guess what I'd like to know is what was the basis for that recommendation? Have we, specifically, we've got elementary school, we've got secondary school. I think the implications for teaching elementary students is different than what they are for high school students. Kind of help us understand how you got to this recommendation and then I think we might be able to have further questions.
Yeah, I need to, I need to like clarification point. I've got placeholders for face shields, coverings for students for K-5 and for 612. I don't have the position there.
Okay.
I should have spelled that out more clearly to you, but, but, uh, so that's to be determined by matter. What I do, right where we're, right now where I'm landing is, right now is I believe at the minimum, we start with every child needs a mask or a covering or something for whatever decision is made in terms of this plan, I follow to go with it. I think that's important. As it relates to employees, that's a different set of circumstances because the governor has a health order in place, which is the law. It says that employees of educational institutions shall wear face coverings to the extent practical when social distance cannot be maintained. That health order is in place through July 31st. I fully expect that order to continue into next year. So the employee side is, is really a matter of law.
It can be mask or shield.
Covering, yes. And, and we also understand, and I certainly, certainly know that in classrooms, there's got to be times where kids have got to see what's going on with a, with a, maybe it's a phonics lesson or what, singing, whatever the case may be. Uh, so there's room in there to operate, you know, when you're maintaining appropriate distance, but that's, that's a side issue. The question for us is a student. So, uh, I, I, like you, have studied a lot of it and I have come to the conclusion that there may be some differences in how we opt to treat elementary and secondary. Uh, the Academy of American Pediatrics has probably been the most clearly defined set of guidances that people, everybody's read about, everybody's studied and we've heard from multitudes of physicians, uh, about it. So it's spelled out in there. One of the things I think that is important that may not be mentioned enough, but their recommendations is, is face mask should be worn when costs, when benefits do outweigh harm, excuse me, when harms outweigh benefits. So that's important to remember for age appropriateness. You know, where is it a point where coverings are not going to make any difference because of the amount of times the hand will be on the face or, uh, just the age appropriateness of it. So, uh, they, they prescribe in there certain ages and so forth that are grade levels and I've heard different ideas about what that ought to be. So I have those developed that way because I do believe that where I would land would likely have some different look based on age appropriateness. would likely have some different look based on age appropriateness. But I didn't want to go so far in this meeting as to say what it should be because I still want to be listening and hearing, particularly from you about it. Because I suspect that even amongst this board of very intelligent people, you're not all going to have the same opinion, you don't. But, so we want to keep making sure we're listening here before I write down what I think it should be. That's as far as I am with it, that I do think every child ought to have one at this point. I think that we're going to have to look at age appropriateness of those. And that's about as far as I'm made to say at this point.
How do you handle the exceptions? And there's always exceptions, like, last time I checked, there's no way to play band with a mask or athletics. Right? So we now will have a part of the school for some period of time, or probably required, that are not in a mask. And then you put them back in the population with, I mean, you, you, once you sort of open the world to exception, it's kind of like the transference of at home. If your kid goes straight to the school, stays in their house, and comes straight home, yes, she's going to the pool. But when your kid is out in the public and out to eat and the parents work in the community and come in, you know, your, your circle of influence expands drastically or exponentially.
Where, where my thoughtfulness is about that piece of it is we know at one point in the day, a child's mask would come off if they were required. They got it in drink. And I haven't found a way to do that yet. I just had a little legacy situation, it's got to happen. So I've been in restaurants where I will have my mask on until I sit down and I get to take it off. But what if I coughed? And there are people sitting from me to Mr. Loon. Have I just erased the whole ocean of while walking and out? But, so there are circumstances that you just described where it is not, it is not healthy, you know, to have it on. If you're in 100-degree weather and a football player's got a mask, then I think that's, that's when the harm outweighs the benefit. And so my wonderings with all of this is how you negotiate those pieces. And then how do you negotiate that some part of the day you wear them and some part you don't? Do we basically neutralize any effectiveness if the mask comes off at any point? And it will, during the day. So it's a, it's such a hard conversation to have in my mind about it, so.
I'm the same said for carpool, or, we've all seen the parking lot at the high school when they get out, it's a free roam, right? And there's going to be no mask, I don't care what you're wearing. There's going to be no masks and.
But if you get masking the vast majority of the time, then I think you've done what you can do. If you go in, and I, and I think it's also going to be real important in the language to decide, I think if it's optional, if I need to be involved.
Well, one of the things I think's important to stress that I'll have in an introductory comment about this is that we're developing a plan to mitigate risk, not eliminate it. And what we put together with a set of guidelines that parents then have to say, am I comfortable enough with the level of risk that still exists to be a part of the on-site or do I more comfortable to be at home? Which is great to have that option. But we will not design a plan that will eliminate risk. I will never begin to.
But there's no, the, the whole health movement was designed to eliminate. It was designed to slow and flatten, I mean, so.
So the question is what, the mitigation we put in place then becomes a question how comfortable parents are with it. And is 13% is that going to go up or is that going to go down? And unfortunately, I just say this, we've got a document that will be, you know, this portion alone is about nine pages of information. And there's only really one box that I've heard any conversation about, same for you. And that really is a portion because there's a lot of other things we're having to think about. And there's a lot of other things to help balance this conversation. So the four habits, four habits for health includes other things. The responsibility, what needs to take place at home? What you do with your hands, keeping those clean all the time? Making sure that your hygiene is such that you're not coughing and sneezing on people. So we can mask all day, but if our kids come to school with temperatures, because we haven't taken the responsibility at home, it doesn't matter. If they wash their hands or sanitize them during the day, all bets are off. So it is a systemic thing that has to work together. And that's what makes it so complicated. And when I talk about rights and responsibilities, we, we have to, as a group, assume that everybody takes responsibility for all four of these things. And what else can be tough? And depending on where we land with face coverings, what I want to put into this plan, I am not of the opinion that it is a disciplinary issue. Now, you perceive a lot of correspondence that wants to come down hard on students for that. And I really don't want to go there because our administrators will spend all day writing referrals about face masks. That is a health issue that, you know, if we require it, then you don't have it on, then you just have to go home. We don't need teachers managing that all day long. That doesn't need to be a debate. So wherever that, whoever come down on it, I don't think it is a political disciplinary matter. It's a matter of health. So I, I probably, Scott, it sounds like probably an attorney in court, and I'd have answered your question.
Great job walking around.
Today, I don't have an answer, and I purposely don't want to have one because what I'm getting from you, when I listen to my teacher advisory team, I talk to PTO folks, when I talk to physicians, it's just information gathering and.
I suppose you mentioned your teacher advisory team. I guess I would be interested, not so much, because we've gotten some feedback from teachers. But less so in terms of, because, because, at least for those who've heard about, primarily, there's a lot of concern in terms of their social, emotional well-being. And that's absolutely important. But I'm also interested in what they think about the teaching environment with and without masks? Or with masks and, or face shield, do our kindergarten teachers believe that they can effectively manage a classroom? If the kids have, and maybe it's different between masks and shields? Or how do our seventh-grade teachers feel about that? Because that's got a component as well.
I would tell you that, that largely is consistent with what you've heard today from a number of teachers and emails. My advisory team was, had some clear delineations by age appropriateness about what level of requirements you go to. The elementary teachers have a different feeling than secondary teachers. And I, I get that, I would expect that. And science somewhat supports, should have like delineation. Where you make it is where the kids can more capable handle that responsibility. Because what I don't want our teachers doing is being in a position where their day is spent. Policing. Policing that situation. We need to have instruction in a comfortable and safe environment. And so that's, when I talk about age delineation, I think that, that we have to be mindful of that. And my advisory team said, said the same effect today. Because helpful to hear them.
So I guess they feel like, assuming that some mask shields or, you know, if, if that's the way the system goes, teaching advisory team feels like it's, they're capable of having effective education with some sort of mask or shield requirement. Now, I think that, number one, goals to get people there. And number two has to be that it's got to be effective to have our students there. So I'd like to know that, you know, where our teachers feel like they can be effective with mask or shields? And what do they feel like if the students aren't there? Are they going to be, you know, worried about their own?
I have an assumption in masks, but, but the consensus from everything I read is the safety is the priority before the instruction is to our teachers. And I think that's will be a natural.
I think ultimately, with the face shields, you could be fairly effective teaching. I'm not so sure as a student, you could be as effective as learning and engaging. I mean, a face shield sort of eliminates everything, right? You can see a face, you can see the movement. But I mean, let's be realistic, the kids aren't going to necessarily wear those. So it's sort of two-pronged. Can our teachers effectively teach in a face shield? I imagine they could, you know, bar and like banned and stuff like that, which I have yet to figure out how you do that. But I think there's also a component of how a child, and it's, I mean, I think you're going to have 50 kids in class and 25 are going to do it fine, and 25 aren't.
Right.
Right? 25 are going to have anxiety because they do have masks. 25 are going to have anxiety because they don't. And that, I mean, so it's, I mean, I believe our teachers can effectively teach through pretty much any of this. It's more how it's received from a student.
I think what we're talking about is effective education environment. It's not just whether they can get up and get the lesson.
And it's going to be hard no matter what, especially elementary. They've been at home with their families for so long. They're thrust back into this environment that's totally unique than anything they've ever experienced. And then, you know, we're trying to respect the parents that want to go back to work. And here's Sally that's, you know, missing her mom, and her stomach hurts all of a sudden, and her head hurts because, you know, she's wearing the mask, but we've got to send her to the nurse. But it's not COVID symptoms, but, you know, that's just.
I think it's kind of a, I think it's a misconception that kids are going to do poorly at it. I think, I think if you look at, and if, you know, I mean, we don't like remote, we don't like remote meetings, right? So if given the choice between, you know, being remote, being away from my peers, or being in a room where we're, you know, not distanced enough that I have to wear a mask, I'm going to pick the mask because I don't want to be with my friends and I want to be back with my teachers.
I agree with you. I still think you get a better education sitting in a classroom with a mask.
I just think it has its challenges.
It really absolutely does have its challenges. But I think, you know, again, going back to the evidence, it really is consistent and clear. There's not a lot of variability. And, and why would we not do everything we could do to ensure that we can keep the kids in school? I, I guess, I guess that's kind of where I'm coming from because we know that masks slow transmission of the virus. And so why would we not want to equip our students and our teachers and our staff with everything within our power to help them be effective and to help that learning take place?
And I agree, I do agree that. Now, the problem is with children, I mean, how many of you stepped out on your porch yesterday? The kids are out in drugs with no mask. So the, we aren't going to stop this coming through the schools. Just like we've never stopped strep, we've never stopped the flu. It's, it's coming. It's a question of how fast, how many. But I mean, we all know it's coming, right? I mean, you can't prevent it. It's coming through school. And I, I understand that. I question the effectiveness of sometimes doing something, right?
So if I want my family to be safe. We can't control.
But if I want my family to be safe, I put them in my bubble and they don't come out. Right? So it's a balance of living and weighing off the risk. I mean, it's just a big balance. And if this were strictly a kid's decision, I stand up here, all day long, preach to you masks are not necessary. The faculty, I've always said this, it's two-pronged. The faculty have a different perspective or risk. I mean, it's just a different, the kids are not going to, the kids are not going to get the symptoms, right? They're not going to fall deathly ill that teachers could be exposed to. And I greatly understand that. And so I think ultimately, the decision probably comes down to more about them than the students.
Well, we can't talk about age appropriateness. I'm sorry, there's not an elementary child that coughs that covers their mouth when they sneeze.
I've seen too many high schools.
They don't do this.
Come to the Weaver household, there isn't none of that.
Well, that's, that's what I'm saying. Age appropriate, they're, they're just going to do what comes natural for the body. You know, we've talked about the, you know, the discipline side of it. And I know we have, you know, something from high school that comes out that you read and you sign for, for a discipline for your child each year. You know, it's, it was brought up earlier. It's a lot of this is going to have to be generated from the home and from the parent. Do you, do you put some of the guidelines that you have? Whether we're saying you will wear a mask, okay, or for whatever case, you will wash, you know, hand washing, not touching, social distancing, whatever. Do we generate something of form like that? And we, you know, the older kids that can comprehend, which is basically junior high and high school, have them sign it, but sit at home and have the parents sign it. And if, and if a parent doesn't sign it, does your child go remote?
Yeah, there are options.
So, yeah.
But I think, you know, just, just, you know, I really like this seatbelt analogy because, you know, when my kids were learning how to drive and now, it's like, when you're in our car, you wear a seatbelt. Does that mean I can control what they do when they're in someone else's car? Or at the summit, or at the restaurant, or something like that? No, but I'm going to control the environment that I can control. And I think this is an environment that we're obligated to try to, to do everything we can to make sure it's as safe as possible for everybody.
Well, with, with the seatbelt analogy, that's a personal choice. By law, when you get in a car and you operate, you've got to have your seatbelt on. And that's what we're talking about here.
It's like that, that, quite, it's a flu vaccine, right? Right? So you could require everybody to get a flu vaccine, and you'd be a whole lot healthier in your school.
Right.
You don't require that. You're not in the part that have a good vaccine, and you can get away from that. So I, I agree, it's seatbelts a lot.
Yeah.
But, yeah, I mean, it's.
I mean, for you, like, you want it to be a mandate from the, from the central office that this is, these are what we're asking you to do in a bi night?
A mandate from Dr. Wood.
I agree with them having them at school. I just personally think they need a little relief throughout their day. Like I said, sitting at their desk, staring at the back of a friend's head. You know, give them a little bit of a break. Hey, when the bell rings, or you've got to go to lunch, or you need to get up and use the restroom? Put it on.
Or.
Use some common sense. Again, you've got to change classes, put it on. I think I talked to you about this. You know, if we can find a way to make this a little bit fun and engaging for them, hey, if you're a rarries rainbow, make them a fun little rainbow mask where all these kids look alike. If you're a lofted lion, let's get them a lofted lion rain, I mean, a lion mask. I mean, it might have a face, but something where it builds community within their school.
Send us the new.
Do it for graduation, for the seniors. Give each grade level one that matches. You know, do something where they're in the halls and it looks, it's cool too. And a lot of parents have said, I'm worried about my kid getting bullied. Or so is those not wearing one and my kid is. They're worried about that. Well, hey, if everybody's got to wear it in the hall, give them one.
And I think if, I think exactly what you're saying, if everybody is required to wear it, then you're knocking out the bullying.
But they need a break at some point in the day to take it off. I don't care if you're in 12th grade or kindergarten. And not just eat lunch, I'm sitting at their desk and they're just doing their work. They need a little reprieve from wearing it. I would want it. That's just my personal opinion.
What we basically talk about is a no-win situation, no matter which way you go.
What else is on your mind?
But are we providing them for kids or not?
Well, that, I, are we providing them? The state department is providing three per child, three per teacher. So there are some, but what you're talking about is more personalized.
Right. And that is just.
It's a valid option, there are opportunities, there are a lot of vendors that love to, my very part of that.
Does the state provide the nurses? They have very specific.
Nurse competes, I think we do that, but we'll have, we'll have to get the things they do in their isolation area. Yes. I, I did, talking about nurses, I do have a question on the, on the nurses. Because I know at high school, that nurse could be busy 24 hours each day without COVID. How are we, I mean, I've read some of the, you know, protection things in place for the, for the nurses. But staffing, how is, if all of a sudden you've got teachers sending Johnny and Suzie to the, to the nurse's office, and she's trying to dole out medicine to the regular crew, and she's dealing with somebody who fell down steps, how are we looking at staffing, nursing, or helping the nurses? Yeah, I think it's a good question, and I think we'll know more when we know more about that. But we do have nurses in our system above the one for our school. We have contract nurses that do specific things, maybe for specific services. So we work with agencies that provide, if we get into situations where that were a need, I don't want to go as far as say confident with anything with staffing, but we have resources we can pull from as possible if we need to increase the pool.
Will there be substitute nurses? Will the nurses be in a substitute role?
I was going to mention, we also have individuals that are trained. We refer to them as NA, so medical assistants around so that maybe an office staff member or someone else that can help with the distribution of medication. I've got the nurses having to attend to somebody else's. And we rarely use that, I think. But we have people trained that can dispense medication, and so I can triage in that case. And that's up to the individual nurse to say, I need that, please, Lord, okay.
Do all our schools have isolation rooms?
They will.
They will?
Yes.
Yes.
And then what is the enhanced screening? The nurse will do enhanced screening in the isolation room?
Uh, let me find where we are.
We'll look point five on page two.
Oh, by screening, I mean physical.
Oh, separation.
Yes, I mean.
Gotcha, gotcha. I thought they were going to be administered. And just to be clear, because we did get this question a lot, parents are responsible for taking temperatures at home. Right? Because I got that question.
We, we will not do temperature checks in the building. Uh, and the main reason, we've looked at a lot of technologies with that. Uh, one of the practical issues is the flow of children and how long they take. But one of the medical side issues is symptomatic students. And we don't catch asymptomatic students doing that. So that's a responsibility I think has to be.
I agree.
You've got to let, you know, it's going to happen.
Does the athletes get scanned? Because they're getting scanned.
We, we, we did a, I'd say, study with it this summer and pick that. And I think it's good technology, but, uh, when you know you can't pick up everything you're going to need to pick up. When I think about 1,600 kids coming through the high school in the morning, the practicality of doing that.
Would start at noon.
Yeah. And so one of the academic pediatric considerations is that be realistic in order to see if you can actually do that or not. Now, that being said, we have a lot of contact with thermometers that will be on site and will be able to be used by our training staff to do that. But we won't be doing the temperature check business. I don't think that's necessarily, I don't think, we should put our bus drivers. Our perception is our teachers are in position.
All right. So how, physically, how do you see if, if I'm a teacher and Jennifer comes up to me and says, I don't feel well? And so, okay, Jennifer, did you go to the nurse?
Yes.
What's the, when the student walks up to the nurse, what's the procedure just in case the student ends up having a temperature and possibly symptoms?
Yeah, well, we cover a big proportion of that. Any kind of those symptom related things that come to a nurse and she makes the decision, the child has to come home? Uh, or if we need to move them to isolation, whatever it may be until the child goes home. And, uh, if they show those symptoms, then, uh, I mean, naturally I think that, one thing you got to remember is symptoms like cold, there's viral symptoms.
They're all same symptoms.
We have to let, yeah, that's why we just have, you know, a nurse make the call, but we won't be cautious about it. So they can not go home.
So I guess my question is, 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 just say Jennifer did end up having the virus and she went to the nurse who's in her room and the nurse said, I think you probably need to go into isolation. Once the nurse moves Jennifer into room number two, what happens to room number one as students are coming to get their meds and twisted need taken care of and stuff like?
Yeah, I think that goes to calls or issues that are normal issues, which for, for nurses many times is medical, is medicine distribution, that you would be calling, you'd call it on your next line at the fence to do that. But you're asking a question that there may be additional medical needs. And I think we know when we know, but, but should we prepare ourselves for the fact we might need additional medical assistance yet?
Well, my, mine is more the physical space. The, the, if, if I'm coming in for my aspirin and she's just walked out of the room and she ends up having the virus, is there a cleaning process that happens between students? Or is there a separate space that you can distribute medicine so that you're not having somebody who's ill walking into that space?
We're, we're looking at a redundancy model and it's something we've done all summer. Really something we developed in the spring, turn our custodians on each week really, um, over the course of the spring. So I felt like we were in a very good position when we got to the summer. So with the redundancy model, what we're looking at is similar to what we did with this space prior to the board meeting. I came through with a N95 approved. It's on the, uh, the N-list EPA neutrochlamocidal cleaner. Sprayed it down, takes about 10 minutes for that product to become active, uh, at the, at the most. Um, and then new students can be able to come into the space. So just like from the board of education and those in attendance right now leave this space, we'll do the same thing here and then feel very confident the space is disinfected appropriately. And each teacher, I mean, we have our spray bottles in supply. Because we've gone to a centralized purchasing format for that, we, we have made sure that our supply chains are there to use through the entire school year. Uh, we have the spray bottles to provide every teacher for a classroom with one, every nurse, every office space. For example, every coach over the course of the summer for our athletic programs as well as other extracurricular programs had one of these. And then what we did in the redundancy model was come back behind them, either first thing in the morning, the very last thing that we do at the end of the day and come back in mist and spray those spaces as well.
So that's what they'll do at the end of every class?
That's what they'll do at the end of every class. That's right, that's right. So just like this space will be cleaned twice before the end of the school day. Uh, we'll go back and clean this space one more time and then a custodian will come in and spread this space either probably by clock or hour.
So the custodian's going to handle it or the teachers in the room?
Both.
Okay. And that's how you do cafeteria spaces and all that?
That's right. But we're saying we're doing that between first period, second period, third or fourth.
That's right. So we're building that into our class schedule to allow.
Yeah, they'll have to have some room, you know, for the end of class where you have to, you know, allow for, you know, the mist on the, the mess or something kind of. So in terms of, I don't anticipate the schools would change the bell schedule necessarily. A little bit of behavior in the classroom in terms of when kids are moving away from their area.
Okay. But Dr. Miller, you were here and took all of what, 10 seconds to manage that space?
Question, Steve's question. Are we allocating additional isolation rooms because of COVID? Or is it going to be the same number of isolation rooms that we had before? I read this as we already had some isolation schools.
We, we really haven't had recorded for isolation or team tech room. So there'll be separate spaces. And that's being determined, worked on now. Some of our schools have a little harder, uh, potential making that happen. There are some structural things that we've worked on in some areas, but it is, it would be a separate space.
That's right. We're working with the building administration as well as the nurses. So in each school, you need to have feedback on what they feel is most appropriate. And then feasibly seeing if we're able to do that from a structural standpoint. If, if we have to get a, the additional medical staff, nurses or whatever, we can get the, the NA's in one of these. But if you have to add more nurses to, are we, is there anything in place from the state to help fund anything like this?
The state provides a certain level of funding for the nurses we have that covers maybe three of our nurses? But nothing COVID related.
There's nothing COVID related out there.
Not at this point. The, the COVID dollars to date that we're giving to schools are based on high level formulas, which we don't follow by, we don't receive those funds. There are a new set of dollars that are coming to us, but it will be specific to technology and intervention. So the answer is no, there's not any.
Okay.
That's probably the thing that may be given our CSFO, most of our earnings, what substitutes will polish, what's that going to look like for us?
So if a parent reports or we find a case, I read in here that the class that they were in will be notified via email.
Yeah, well, the, the way the reporting will work is that we will notify groups where, where we think a potential exposure occurred. And I will make sure it's clear that it's potential, possible, we don't know for sure. But the nurse will be a part of that chain of events. So if it's second period and it's found out, uh, we can assume that the groups would have included the first and second period class. If it's the end of the day, you know, what groups was that student a part of, those classes? Was it an extracurricular? So our data manager, uh, Nina Forbes, will be building all of those with our registrars. So to the extent we can notify groups, that's what we'll be doing. And, you know, you can expect that that's going to be happening a lot.
It's going to happen.
We're not regulating when you have potential exposure, you stay home. We're saying you had one, keep an eye on your symptoms. Maybe we'll consider a doctor's visit, but we're not getting into that. If we did, nobody would scope right.
Yeah.
You mentioned in here a couple of times about stagger dismissal schedules.
Yes. It won't affect the time in which school starts and ends. What we're asking principals to consider is how we can lessen density into pinch points, exit points in the building, arbitrary points in the building. So, uh, if they have to, if they stagger movements into holding areas by grade levels, uh, the high school perhaps could consider it by sections of the building. Uh, but we, we'll still keep our start times, end times the same, but within.
So you're referring to start and times, not, uh, period changing times?
That's right. That's right. On, on the rally discussion. Do we know or have a plan in place yet for assemblies, pepperellies, those types of things?
Uh, the assemblies information, what, what I, what I have in there is that field trips are, some teacher buys a group that they own, my own.
Virtually.
Yeah. The assemblies of more than one class will be held outdoors with appropriate distance observed or fire up distance square face coverings. That's without any, that's without decision about face coverage at this point. But what I'm saying is if you're going to have one, you got to have distance and you got to be covered. And it's got to be outside. And all that is to say, board members, that it would be really difficult to hold it this empty. At rallies and all. And as unfortunate that is, that would be extremely difficult to do.
On the field trips, will that qualify like athletes who compete in stage or they technically travel?
Yeah, the, the TBD right now with that is, is positions they're expected to say they will take, which then affects band. Uh, I mean, there's a lot of groups that are impacted by that.
Do we know when they're going to put any ruling?
You know, I said yesterday the plan is to keep moving forward, but that evolves every day. NCAA is looking at things. I'm sure NFL is, but I don't really know where they're going to land. But that's a whole side issue.
It's basically out of our control. We will just follow whatever Alabama has.
And as of right before this meeting, they were saying, it, competition will happen. It will be on schedule right now.
They're still hoping.
But they still, they're still the huge great.
Well, they're still practicing in masks. They have no contact.
Yes, but also surrounding states have also pushed back some of their participation timelines as well. So happy there's a, yeah.
Okay, then you have.
Yeah, you're the only one.
I got like most.
What about, um, outdoor PE and recess, like, or if they can do outdoor PE, what would?
They can still do indoor PE. There are some schools, of course, besideable now, that's more challenged for outdoor activities because there are outdoor activities in construction right now. So, uh, it's, they can still use gym space. That's just an encouragement. Let's be outdoors. Same for recess. So, um, you know, you got a lot of kids in the space there. We do have some options like in West where we have additional gym space when available for our students. But, uh, all the schools will contend with issues, uh, when they're all together because of brain or implement weather. Uh, the Physical Education Association in Alabama, teachers has given us guidance about some of those things. I'm still reviewing it to determine what of that we would want to say or not say in our plan about what happens indoors. But what you're trying to do as much as you can is eliminate contact type events. Probably one of the major recommendations I have. But, but I have to tell you, PE, music choir, all those things are important. If you strip our children of that, that 13% is going to go a lot higher.
Yeah.
And ultimately, they have to want to still come to school.
Yeah. Now, what can we do in those classes to mitigate? There are, yes. But, uh, we, we just can't take that away from the in-school experience.
And we're staying with our same class size, right? I mean, we haven't, we have not said we're going to let it pass the.
Right. We, you know, currently I look at three levels, K through 12. And currently our class sizes generally are pretty good. There are a few higher than others. That, that was a difficult call right now because if anything, it could be lessened unless you had to collapse classes and move those up. But yeah, we, we want to stay on what is doing more of the trademarks of our systems, keeping our class sizes in good shape.
Now, are we good on like, because a few years ago, it was pushed to go away from desks and go to tables. Do we have enough desks, assuming that's what's coming back into all classes?
We have desks and we have tables, but I don't have any plan to change that out to completely desk. Uh, we do have tables in which we would have to delineate spaces for students. But kindergarten especially, early childhood, I would say generally will see desks. But you may also find that in the high school area, lab areas, uh, art areas, spaces like that. So there's going to be a combination of that. Would we have enough desks? Probably not to do that, but.
I mean, it can be done with tables if you have the right space and space, and I just think it is. Yeah.
I really appreciate the amount of detail in this. Um, and especially that you even consider class parties. I was, I was like, yeah, you guys have seriously put everything in here that you can possibly think of that, that needs to be addressed. The amount of work is, is amazing.
And now I would say some super nice ads with the substitute pool. So I say you're going to have contract substitutes in the pool.
We, we have a plan to, that hopefully will add to the pool. Question you asked earlier, what would we like to do? Of course, we have contract fellow services in which we have permanent subs that are with us all the time. We think we're going to be able to have a few more of those. That's, that's the first line of defense. Second line of defense would be, uh, with substitutes is, is we have a number of parent volunteers that are at our schools all the time and they're volunteers. Uh, we are considering looking at how we might open up contracts for parents that would be subs, but not working to the KLA framework to, to deepen the pool. Uh, when you get into triage, you have to start looking at your certified people on staff. So the first thing is professional development is secondary to having a full staff in the school. So if you've got PE schedules on a day and we aren't fully staffed, we're not having a PE. Uh, and then finally, when you get to a point where all that's been done and you still have spaces, you have to begin to look at everything outside of your core teaching areas, your classroom teaching areas and the core areas and say, where can we fill in the gaps, uh, for that day? Interventionist, reading coach, librarians, some PE teachers maybe because you're still going to have PE. You have to try to triage in that manner to cover. So, uh, that, those are the, that's the steps we would take, just scaffolding our way through to try to cover.
How's lunch? That's a big question we've gotten. Is, is it going to keep the same?
Yeah.
I mean, we don't have so much. And another thing to really point out is we're actually fairly lucky that we have a grand big school with lots of space now. And we just took 500 kids out of the high school.
Right. The basics of this breakfast and lunch will be grab and go style and type things. Uh, what we're trying to emphasize all together is we're trying to eliminate the flow of things coming back and forth from parents. So we would really encourage paypams, but not every parent wants to do that. We pay online. Uh, we're not going to take cash distribution. Uh, you know, we'll waste money. We'll take checks, but not through cash. But we'd like to have that all online, try to have as much touchless as possible. So the grab and go would be how that would look. Where do they go is the next question. And so for principals is essentially you could use cafeteria or large spaces if you can maintain the appropriate distance. And that's not going to be possible without some help in placing them in other places. So classrooms will come into play, you know, for use of, for seating there. Because you can't appropriate distance, the high school cafeteria and get everybody in there. So those are realities, but we'd like to use it to the extent we can. If it's not possible, which it won't be in some cases, then you move into classrooms. And then principals can then decide, one day, you know, it may be Ms. Hudson's class gets to do the cafeteria. One day Dr. Baker's class gets to do cafeteria. They can have those liberties to do that. So what I'm trying to do with that and going to art classes and music classes is not having a chair all day in one place. Uh, we need to move on about, I just think that's important, no matter what circumstances it is, to try to have some modicum of normalcy in the day. So, uh, I think it's a pretty tough strain on the child. I'm thinking about my own and sitting in one spot. I mean, everybody goes to their mind, you might do that. It's just, I don't think that's fair to kids and I don't think it's fair to students, to the staff. But that would be the answer on, on child nutrition. I do want to know if students who want to do full remote will be able to participate in the program. We would have a site, our sites designated that one day a week they can pick up meals for the week, breakfast and lunch if they choose to participate. So that, that would be available to remote.
And my last question. The transportation. So I did see we were adding a night parade, some buses to spread out. Is that, so we run a faculty bus, athletic buses, and then night parade buses? That's.
We have route, we do have route buses.
Oh, we do have a few.
Route buses are small in number and so we think spacing will be okay on that. Where spacing is going to be a little bit of a problem is the freshman campus shuttle. But when you don't have field trips, you've got drivers of that.
You have that. And I guess athletics, you would kind of spread them out too?
The temperature is, yes.
I thought that was good.
Well, and the thing about that is, you know, if we're realistic with football, you know, is it worth spreading them into a bunch of different buses when they're going to put a helmet on and lay all under each other for?
Right. They all do that.
That amount of time, it's like, what, what is your comfort set?
Some other question on the, on meals, meals again. Is there a thought as to whether it's better to have students getting meals at the school versus bringing meals from home in a. versus bringing meals from home in a paper sack that's been touched by multiple people?
Certainly, if you can bring those from home, that's good. Now, what, one thing that the plan says, with regards to lunch and breakfast and portioning, we just can't have visitors in. And we've got to limit the amount of that. I hate that personally, but that's, I think that's important. And we don't really need meals being brought in and creating that kind of flow. So if you bring it in, I don't want to discourage using our child nutrition program because it's very good. So it's an option, you can bring the food or you can get the food that's going to be in the cafeteria.
Well, that's my question, are we thinking it's safer to have as many kids using the, the child nutrition program versus bringing their own stuff?
Well, I, I think we can mitigate enough risk because of the way the food would be provided. The way we would handle checkout part, sanitation, sanitizing of hands before and after, things like that. I think we can mitigate that towards a bit factors.
Mine would run the rest of eating the longest food ever mine.
Those are just sandwich type stuff.
It's, but it's not self-service, right?
Yeah, there might be some instances of that if they were individually packaged. But that, that's the key is that we're not into the traditional.
Everybody touches both sides.
Keep going back from that.
What else? Well, I know that we'll continue to talk more of the permanent days issue, have time to digest more of it. And we're still working about eight days a day.
What about carpool? Is that going to be like a rainy day carpool type setup?
I think that's well, I think that's the best way to describe it. But I would say principals would tell you it was more simulated for a rainy day.
Oh, and lockers? Are you going to schedule them or do you have the space spread out?
What we've said basically for secondary is either don't use them or create the use of them where it is spaced. So you don't have high density in locker.
Yeah, I think our new buildings have a, now even with the person has enough space to.
They can spread.
And I don't know what high school would be used.
They, most of them, they use it back.
In the middle, but the middle in the grand big building, you got to find the space.
So one of the considerations I want to, I want you to be aware of is with governance and budgeting. By governance, I mean policy things in July where we, we will bring some policy things to you that we need to make some adjustments to. It could be the pandemic, the policy, the virtual school policy. There are some things that from a governance perspective needs to be codified based on the plans we're making. So you can expect to see some of that. From a budget perspective, Courtney, help me not forget these. But we have a few different sources of funds to dedicate toward what is becoming a very sizable amount of expenses. The first one is the advancement technology dollars that come to us. We can reserve some funds for safety and security. The state of Alabama has released just yesterday, the government, I think governor calls it, Governor's Emergency Education Relief Fund and Gears Fund. I mentioned that earlier to you, that will be coming to us in some share for technology intervention that can offset some cost. And the city council is working now, they will be looking at something next week with cares money, favorship from the county and how we could partner with them as potentially subcontractors or sub, grantees, excuse me, for some dollars, which can assist in the amount of things that Martin has lined up in the supply chain. So I think that from those perspectives, we can manage, find, where my concern is and Courtney's concerning is, is the volume of leave and substitutes that we're going to have to contend with, of which we do not know what that looks like. So, and you'll remember, we're already in a tight budget where we're trying to keep the dollars as close to this as we can. So that was going to be a real challenge for us.
And right, right now, the expectation is that all teachers will be on their campuses in classrooms, right?
Unless you're remote, we'd say maybe in a different location. Am I answering?
I believe so. I guess my question is, is if, if teacher A decides they're not comfortable with being on campus?
Well, the teacher options would be, you know, once we get the schedule worked out, assignments are made. You know, some, there are some staff that could see the plan and decide they are not comfortable returning. Could we say have options, which would be to not return? If they need qualifications for sick or family medically or, or enhanced family medically, but say that the family's first impact, they may have options there as well. So, and I anticipate, excuse me, something that will happen. And we'll have educated our folks on that so they know what their options are. We had heard a link conversation with our administrators yesterday about those type things. Our employees are fully informed of what their options are.
Have one more question. Our social education folks, well, do they, all their IP's updated with COVID issues? I mean, I assume this would hit that group extremely hard. And some of this stuff would be extremely hard on them. Is it all handled with their IP's?
Mr. Ford has been meeting with, with special ed teachers and looking at those IP's to see what they need to, to have additional things.
Is there a viable remote option for special education?
I think there is. I think maybe the better answer is, is it depends. I think some circumstances, yes, some, no. But, you know, our obligations provide the free and proper public education. And so we have to provide what we can appropriately. And some of those would be depending on what the IDP requirements are, a little bit different for remote. We still, and our goal is still to take every one of those if it is hard as we can be. I appreciate you bringing up because while I don't specifically mention that, the plans, they're great after speaking, undertaking.
And there were certain things dictated by the state. That was one of the few things they.
I did want you to have some sense in closing today of how we're going to communicate and work together with, not only just the parents, but how things look. And we've been handling all that for us, another really nice job. So I wanted to just to give a brief on some of the components of the communication process as we finish up.
I'll just slide right here. We've identified three different groups connected in our school system that we feel need unique communication plans. First would be internally faculty and staff, and their needs are going to pertain a lot to training, new procedures that are going to be put into place, some of which you've heard about, discussions about pedagogy and just instruction, how that's going to look different. And so we're putting together a package for them of videos that goes into those different areas. And also we want to spend a good chunk of the year publicizing to them what social emotional supports are available to them. We feel like that's, that's extremely important. And then, of course, regular updates from the central office as far as just the overall view of school health, safety and, and just how we are wrapping around our faculty and staff over the course of the school year. The second group would be students and families. They are going to need to have very clear communication from us about all of this plan. And, and we've, we've learned through the course of the spring that they want to hear from us in several different ways. As you know, we utilize a lot of video over the course of the spring to try to stay connected with our families, which we heard a lot of positive things about. We also heard from a number of people who said, that's not how I get information best. We know there's a number of people who just want to see just the readout of what we're, what our plans are. Some people, we've seen a lot of state and local agencies that are using color coded graphics to communicate different things. And so our plan is to utilize all of them. So there's going to be great redundancy in our, our communication to families to make sure that everybody is getting this procedural information, the complete understanding of the teaching and learning options that are available to them and everything else that goes throughout the year. And a really critical component is, we heard Dr. Freeman mention this a minute ago, rapid notification that needs to be taken place probably on a daily basis to communicate with families about potential exposures in the schools and other student health information that they need. And we're setting up the capacity for that. We actually had a very productive meeting with our mass notification vendor earlier this morning to discuss setting up groups by class and on the elementary level and the secondary level. We are going to send that information to them. They will keep that information up to date throughout the year so that we can really pinpoint those student groups. If there has been a potential exposure, then everybody that's in that student group will get a notification. Their parents will get a notification and they'll receive that instantly. So we feel really good about, about what's taking place there. And also for students and families, publicity of the social emotional supports that are going to be available to them. And finally, the general public, our community partners, all of our stakeholders in the community. This is a tight knit community and, and I think everybody's going to have a vested interest in, in how things are going in schools this year to an even greater extent than, than we normally have. And so for that, we're going to have another COVID-19 website that has all of this information that you've seen tonight. We're going to have informational signage that's going to be placed throughout the schools, in every classroom, in every bathroom, in every common area, every public space, and then outside the entrances to the schools for visitors who may be coming in. Things to be mindful of as they come in. We've worked with a great vendor who's put all of that together for us just this week. And so all of that is getting printed and will be put out in the community. And then there's continued regular updates from us regarding the overall safety of the community. You heard the four habits for health campaign that we've put together, those four things, home, head, hands, and hygiene. And, and really the, the number one, and we really want to push this in our communication with people, is that everything starts at home. We've got to work with our families to create an understanding that we need you to just listen to your body and, and keep an eye on yourselves, keep an eye on your symptoms. And, and if you don't feel well, stay home. We have the, the capacity in place to allow that learning to continue so that a student who's running a fever or has got a cough or something, doesn't feel like they have to just, you know, just deal with it and go on to school because they can't, you know, miss out on something. So the fact that, you know, this team has done the work to, to create that capacity makes that message that much easier for us to communicate and is really going to approach that home. So again, the communication on the complete plan is going to begin next week. And then we'll, we'll have a full rollout when the school year begins.
You know, something I'd like maybe to have a little consideration on, and I'm seeing it now in facilities that I visit. And before you can enter, you get, you know, you get the head scan, you get the questions. You read a form, you read about their procedures, their policies, you sign it, you date it. There, now there's a line under there, do you understand what you have just read? We're, we're talking about, you know, giving great information and training to our personnel. And we talked earlier about documentation. This, I'd like to consider us doing something, looking at something like that possibly when we offer training in situations like this. Because a lot of times people will sit through training and they'll go, okay, I've sat through my two hours of training. I can check that off the list. And they may not understand or comprehend exactly what everything is. I think we need to know that our personnel understand what's being presented, why it's being presented, and they comprehend it, and we know that they're saying they comprehend it.
Want to do that? Is your question?
I'll say, I thought it was well done. I thought the whole, well thought out, well done. I mean, there wasn't a question you couldn't answer.
There's a, a lot of appreciation I can give. We still have a lot of work to do with the team that sits here and many others that are part of it. I think I've generally learned to read my mind in some ways and just know that there's some things that they're just doing. And I've been really amazed at just the work they've gone off and done without having to get a lot of direction. And so it makes putting a plan together and bringing it into one document really easy. It's been well thought out. So we've got very good comments and work from our administrative team as we met through this. I'm now listening to stakeholder groups, just trying to see where their matches are and things. And I think it's obvious to you what the most talked about issue is that I'm hearing, and that's fine. So I really think that's probably the detail of the plan that is left to have ready together. And then, and we'll get that decided, so.
Thank you.
My hands off to all y'all.
Do we have a motion?
So moved. Longest board meeting ever.
You missed one and you really make it up for it.
Did you motion?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion.
Just second, second. All in favor?